Morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024. Regular meeting of the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. Before we begin, I want to recognize in the audience former Mayor Bob Mueller. Welcome, Mayor Mueller. If you will, please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, if you'll please stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
They move.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are recognitions, and we will begin with Nancy introducing a new employee.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to introduce you to Will Jones. Will is an Eagle Scout, and he was raised in Wilson, North Carolina by his two great parents, Esther and Jack Jones. He graduated from UNC Wilmington with a degree in community health, and he has 12 years managing experience in the healthcare industry. Will loves the Outer Banks and enjoys surfing and shell hunting. He lives in Manio with his cat buddy and enjoys the Outer Banks. Will Jones.
Thank you, Nancy. Next on our agenda is a recognition for five years of service, and I'll call Chief Hale to the podium.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here before you today to recognize Master Police Officer Alex Liverman for his five years of service with the town. Alex joined our agency in 2019 after spending two years with the Tarral County Sheriff's Department. Liverman has worked his way through our career progression to Master Officer last year, and he prides himself in traffic enforcement. He's always seeking training opportunities to further his growth in our profession, and he leads our department in DWI enforcement. Liverman is very motivated and always willing to assist in shift coverages. Alex is a member of the Navy Reserve's Carrier Strike Group Four and has been deployed to the Middle East numerous times. In his free time, Alex enjoys fishing and anything dealing with the outdoors. Congratulations, Alex, on your five years. We look forward to many more.
Thank you, Chief. The next item on our agenda is a recognition for 20 years of service, and I'll ask Chief Wells to come to the podium.
Honorable Mayor and Board of Commissioners, I stand before you today to celebrate the exceptional career of James Mosman, a true example of courage, compassion, and commitment in service to NAGS Head Fire Rescue. On March 29th, 2004, James embarked on this journey that would span 20 years, leaving an indelible mark on our community. During his tenure, Captain Mosman's consistently exhibited unwavering courage confronting adversity, his steadfast dedication to safeguarding the safety and security of our town has been truly remarkable. Whether confronting the rigors of firefighting or handling emergencies with resiliency, Captain Mosman's bravery has served as a beacon for his colleagues and an inspiration for our community. In addition to his acts of courage, Captain Mosman embodies compassion in every aspect of his service. His commitment extends beyond the call of duty, and he has consistently shown empathy and understanding to those in distress. Whether confronting a community member during crisis or providing support to his fellow firefighters, Captain Mosman's compassion has fostered a sense of unity and care within our department. Each year, James takes the lead in our breast cancer awareness fundraising efforts, dedicating numerous hours to designing the logos, purchasing the T-shirts, and coordinating the delivery to the stations. He has undertaken this initiative for the past decade. James' leadership and tireless efforts on behalf of our department have resulted in raising over $10,000 for the Outer Banks Relief Foundation. This further exemplifies Captain Mosman's character and compassion. As we gather today to celebrate Captain Mosman's two decades of service, let us recognize his profound impacts on NAGS Head Fire Rescue and express our gratitude for his unwavering dedication, leadership, positive influence on the safety and welfare of our department and our community. Congratulations, Captain Mosman.
I'll ask Captain Mosman to remain up front and ask the board to come around to the front of the podium. Thank you, Chief Wells, and thank you, Captain Mosman, for those years of service. Next on our agenda is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I will read this and ask that the board adopt this resolution. Child Abuse Prevention Month, an April 2024 proclamation. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility, affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, the knowledge of parenting and child development, and the resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children will help to ensure that all children grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, we, the Town of NAGS Head Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live, this being the third day of April 2024, and ask that there be a motion to adopt.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. That brings us next to public comment, and I will turn this over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide comment to the board. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to public comment. But anybody who wishes to provide comment may do so at this time. Please note that if you're here to comment for the public hearings that are on the agenda, you should reserve your comments until we actually get to that public hearing. But for any other comments that people wish to make, if you'll please start by going to the podium, tell us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the board. I will also let you know when your five minutes are about up. Mr. Mueller.
We know that, Mayor.
My name is Bob Mueller. I live at 124 West Old Cove Road. I want to talk to you about three things, two old items and one that is relatively new. I spoke to you a while ago about red light running. I want to thank Chief Hale for providing me with some data, both on tickets that have been written and on accidents that have been caused. It is still just endemic. It's a constant thing. I witnessed an 18-wheeler run through Adams Lane at the bypass. You may know that intersection since you drive through it almost every day. And I witnessed a car run through a red light at Daniel Street while my light going east, going east, was yellow. Okay? He jumped the light. He wasn't even slowing down for a yellow light. He jumped the light and ran through it before it changed. It's out there every day. Anything you can do to help the police department in enforcing this, I know that it is a primary priority of theirs. I was going to say red light cameras, but I see that increasingly towns are dropping their red light camera programs. Raleigh recently dropped their, is phasing out their red light program, red light camera program, as is Greensboro, so I'm not sure that is the answer. One thing I would ask you to do is go to the DA and make sure that people who get tickets for running red lights are not allowed to plead them down. Okay? That's one way to make sure, particularly that people like 18-wheelers, drivers with CDLs, have a big incentive not to get tickets for running red lights. Issue number two is an old one that you folks brought up. I see you're discussing accessory dwelling units, ADUs again today, rising opposition to them because they will increase both the built and human density of our town and degrade our quality of life. They will increase parking problems. They'll increase sanitation problems. They will increase wastewater issues and crowding. We don't need them. We have a good town as it is now. If you want housing for long-term rentals, work on your multifamily ordinance and get that done. The ordinance you have for 2019 had no way to enforce the long-term rentals. It had that 30-day provision in the definition, which is the wrong place to have a rule. If you're going to have it in the rule, make sure you have it down on the body in the zoning. Also, if you're going to talk about those, you need to talk about how you're going to have impact fees affect permits for ADUs. Every ADU will amount to an increase in water, sanitation, recreation, the use of our great facilities like the dog park, and of course, our beach accesses, as well as administrative costs, increased fire demand, police demand. So all those impact fees should be assessed against ADUs if you think you're going to move forward with them. I look forward to hearing your discussion and seeing what comes of it. Finally, I would encourage you to take a strong position and convey it to the Rules Review Commission on the temporary rules that have been re-adopted by the Coastal Resources Commission. It's clear that there is an effort at the state level to get rid of significant amounts of coastal regulation that have led to the wonderful development we have on the coast, not just here in NAGS Head, but up and down the coast. Included in that package of temporary rules are the rules around the AEC for Jockeys Ridge, but that's not the only important rule that is included in those temporary rules. I'd encourage you to adopt a strong resolution and enter to the Rules Review Commission. They have a meeting coming up on April 8th. The town sent out an email yesterday about it, which I strongly applaud you for. Thank you very much for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Does anybody else wish to address the board?
Good morning. My name is Courtney Gallup. I reside at 6917 South Croatan Highway. I'm here today on behalf of the League of Women Voters. I'm currently a board member of the Dare County League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters of Dare County is a nonpartisan political organization which encourages informed and active participation in government. We also work to increase the understanding of major public policy issues and influence public policy through education and advocacy. Our local league is affiliated with the League of Women Voters, North Carolina, at the state level, and League of Women Voters, U.S., at the national level. Locally, in this room, I'm happy to remind this board that candidates, all of the NAGS Head candidates for Commissioner, participated in the League of Women Voters Forum, which was held in this room, and a special thanks to Roberta Thumann. I'm here today to show you and introduce you to our annual Citizens Guide. I brought extra copies, which I will submit to the secretary, to the town clerk. And this is a comprehensive phone listing of all the civic, political, and associated numbers in Dare County. It's very, very helpful. Every year, we have a committee that pulls this together. They're very popular. They're very sought after, and they're very helpful for anyone new and not so new in the community. So we'd like to pass this on to the town clerk. There are more copies available through me or any League of Member Voters, League of Women Voters member. Thank you very much. While I have a couple of minutes left, as Courtney Gallup from Gallup Funeral Services, I would like to thank Chief Hale for the responsiveness that his officers have shown us for helping us lead funeral processions in and out of town. It's been very helpful. They're always there, and they always do a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallup. Does anybody else wish to address the board? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session.
Thank you. That brings us next to the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
To move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to public hearings. I do need to say that we had a second public hearing advertised for this meeting regarding parking on septic systems, and that is being rescheduled to follow additional planning board review. So now we will move to this public hearing, and I'll recognize Attorney Leidy and Planning Director Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may point out that in this particular matter, the board sits as a legislative body to consider this proposed text amendment. And so at this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider the text amendments that have been submitted by Albemarle Associates Limited on behalf of Galasa Holdings LLC to allow the long-term rental of units within existing hotels and motels. And we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis by the Planning and Development Director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. As the attorney stated, I am here this morning to present a text amendment request that was made by John DeLucia of Albemarle and Associates on behalf of Galasa Holdings LLC. If adopted, the amendment to the UDO would allow the long-term rental of units within existing hotel and motels. The planning board discussed this request numerous times, and what we have before you today is an ordinance that's been drafted with input from both planning staff, planning board, and the applicant that would allow the conversion of existing hotel units that were previously intended for transient occupancy to be converted to long-term rentals. I have up on this screen the actual proposed ordinance language. I'll try to go through that. And I won't belabor each and every item, and I'll state that I'm happy to go back and answer questions, of course. So the first thing we did here is adopted, or proposed, rather, some definitions that we would need in place prior to considering the amendments. So we have a definition for long-term occupancy or tenancy. Note that that's going to be 90 days, 90 consecutive days or more. Principal place of residence, definition for qualified person, and definition for workforce housing or workforce housing unit. We had originally drafted these definitions when we went through the process of discussing multifamily. So the definitions have been reviewed as it was related to the multifamily ordinance and was also reviewed by the town attorney. So hopefully, those are in good shape moving forward. As far as the supplemental regulations, what we're proposing is that to allow this conversion within hotels and motels, it would only be within the C2 zoning district and for those properties that were constructed prior to November 10th, 1972. So that date is the town's pre-firm date. That's when the FEMA flood maps came into effect, so that's why we chose that date. When you apply that, this is going to, this amendment could potentially apply to the Seahorse Inn down around Quailbone Junction, Owens Motorport, Tar Hill Motel, First Colony, and NAGS Head Beach Inn. The conversion of hotel units to long-term rentals would be approved via the special use permit process. So you would see that. Both the planning board and the Board of Commissioners would see that. There's a lot of discussion about, once a transient hotel unit is converted to long-term, what if we wanted to revert back? Originally, we had thought that you would also need to go through the special use permit process, but in talking it out, it was determined that as long as no changes have been made to the structure, the unit, or the site, which would increase the degree of nonconformity, there's no reason that we couldn't handle that administratively. So what we're proposing is a special use for the conversion, but if you want to go back to standard hotel, then that can be done administratively. All units within the hotel development shall be converted to long-term occupancy. So you couldn't have a development that's co-mingled with long-term and short-term the way this has been proposed, and that was actually preferable by the applicant. Long-term occupancy, as we noted, would mean 90 consecutive days or more. At least 50% of the units shall be dedicated to workforce housing. As we were going through this process, you know, we realized that in a lot of ways, if this type of project were to be proposed today, it would be considered multifamily. And it seems to be consensus that if we are going to have multifamily, it needs to be for the purpose of helping us have some opportunities for workforce housing. So we really wanted the applicant to be comfortable assigning a percentage of those units to be workforce housing, and they were. They stated that 50% of the units would be workforce housing, so. Additionally, interior space dimensions of each unit shall meet the minimum requirements of the North Carolina Building Code. I didn't put the section in there because building codes change sometimes, but the attachment was part of your application, and I believe it says right now that a building area of 220 square feet is the minimum. And the applicant has stated that that would work for them. The hotel development shall meet current North Carolina Fire Prevention Code requirements. Again, if something like this were to be constructed today, it would have to be sprinkler protective. A lot of the properties that we've talked about that could take advantage of this likely are not sprinkler protected. So at least this language allows us to go back in there and make sure they have the proper alarms if they need to have interconnected alarms, things of that nature that can be required. A minimum of two parking spaces shall be required for each unit. Utility meters for individual units are prohibited, and the hotel should operate under a single unified management operation. This is language that we have in our cottage court ordinance currently, and that's just in there to hopefully discourage people from trying to circumvent our subdivision ordinance from conduing out individual units and selling them, so. A provision in here that all goods and material equipment, et cetera, shall be stored in an approved location, not visible from public right-of-way or neighboring properties. You know, when you're thinking about this, a hotel unit is likely going to be a little smaller than what you would envision for a single-family dwelling. If you have somebody coming in, they've obviously got some things they're bringing with them. So just wanting to make sure that in terms of storage, everything's going to be stored in an appropriate location. And then lastly, we have in here a provision for enforcement that states that staff would annually request the operator to submit their lease agreements or rental agreements to ensure that they all contain language specific to long-term rental and that at least 50% of them contain language on meeting the requirements for workforce housing under our definition. So that's the extent of the ordinance. I'm happy to go into more detail on any individual item, and we do have Mr. John DeLucia from Albemarle and then Lee War Galasa from Galasa Holdings, if you have any questions for them.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
So if 50% is dedicated to workforce housing, it doesn't have to be full. I mean, if they have 50% of not workforce housing and just put you in there as essential workforce housing?
So that, I mean, that's something that I guess potentially could arise where, let's say we're dealing with 20 units, and they've dedicated these 10 as workforce, but as it happens, you know, those 10 don't fill up, but the other 10 do. That is possible. We don't have anything written in here that would require that those 50, that 50% be leased or rented at the same time, so that you, at all times, you have a minimum of 50%.
Did the applicant give a reason why they were not amenable to more and why it was restricted to 50%?
Yeah, Mr. DeLucia can obviously speak to that, but from my recollection during the planning board, they really didn't. They felt like the majority of the units likely would be workforce, but they just didn't want to have the constraint.
It just seemed like, man, you'd want people working to pay the bills, but maybe I'm not the business person, so I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure they can answer that as well.
If it's not 50%, if 50% is workforce, but it's not allowed to be short-term and long-term at the same time, that other 50% would still be long-term. It just wouldn't be workforce.
Correct. It would all be long-term. Half would be required to be workforce.
Okay. So similar to what we've talked about with multifamily on the 60/40?
It is. Just a different percentage.
Any other questions for Kelly? All right. If not, anything further, Ms. Wyatt?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. DeLucia, anything to present on behalf of the applicant?
Good morning. Happy Easter, everybody. I'm John DeLucia from Albemarle Associates. We began discussing this ordinance and matter in August with your staff. And as you probably all know, Mr. Galasa has purchased the Owens properties. He owns the restaurant, the motorport, and the oceanfront hotel. And we've been doing some renovations on those buildings. Matter of fact, the motorport has never looked as good as it looks right now. Carpeting's been torn out. Walls have been painted. Towels have been thrown out. New furniture, new fixtures. I mean, they're really, really nice units again. Bob, to answer your question and yours, Kevin, about the 50%. Mr. Galasa has stated in the planning board that he's got a list of over 75 people that are looking for housing that are workforce people. And it's likely that a lot of, more than 50% of those units will be for workforce housing. However, say you have a widow or a widower who doesn't, sold the house, doesn't need a big house anymore, likes to fish. I mean, these would be perfect, those studio apartments for, I mean, my wife would like to live in one of these, actually. And so that was the reason for the 50%. It would be better than 100% to give them some flexibility for someone who is a retiree that's not working. But, you know, that'd be a perfect spot. You're right next to the restaurant. You're right next to the grocery store for coons. You're on the beach. You've got the pier there. It's a really nice location to do some studio apartments. There were some questions in the planning board about converting back and forth and back and forth from long-term to short-term to long-term. That's not the intention here. The intention here was to... The intention here was to provide some long-term housing for workforce and for local folks. And the only reason it would be converted back would be if we got enough workforce housing on the beach somewhere, and there wasn't the need for some small studio apartments anymore, then they could convert it back to become a hotel again and continue to run it. Over the winter, like I said, they've done extensive remodeling in here. They're really fixing it up, sprucing it up. It's going to be run as a motel this season, obviously, because we don't have this language in place yet nor a special use permit. But the intention would be to convert probably next year. And as you all know, we have to have an ordinance first, and then it'll probably take another three or four months to run through the process. And we would like to be in a position to make the decision whether or not they want it to convert by the clock. With that, I'll answer any questions you all have.
All right. Do you want to present anything further as the applicant or have Mr. Galasa present?
Do you want to say anything?
All right. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed text amendment? Yes, sir.
That's Bob Mueller, 124 Alcoa Road. I don't oppose this, but I think the town needs to address, needs to face the fact that it has no enforcing mechanism in place to manage either the workforce requirements or the time limit requirements of this as they are mirrored in the multifamily ordinance and will hearken back to the ADU. The town does not plan to go knock on doors and say, "Can you show me your pay stub? How long have you been here?" Look at, if the town wants these to be used properly, the town needs to look at creating or finding a mechanism or organization that can work through and make sure that these units are being rented. Director Wyatt mentioned there are any number of other buildings that are, could be converted to this use, and it may well be that those folks are less rigorous in their, in their follow-up procedures than, than Mr. Galasa, I believe, will be. Looking at a rental agreement, going and saying, "Can you show me your rental agreement," doesn't show you anything. A person can show you anything they want. And even if that is the rental agreement they use, that doesn't mean that that person didn't lie to the, to the, to the rental agreement. So I'd encourage, I don't have a particular answer for you. There was a method. The workforce, the Community Development Corporation did some of this work, particularly around the cost of buildings and, and local residency, making sure that things were being used by full-time residents. They're gone. It's going to be a problem, not just for Nax Head, it's going to be a problem for the entire county as the county looks at creating housing that has a limited set of uses. How are they going to enforce that? This might be a good time for the town to think about how it's going to address that question. Again, I don't oppose the ordinance. I think it's, it's probably a good use, and certainly, we all know that workforce housing is needed, but I encourage you to think about how you're going to enforce it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Does anybody else wish to comment on the, on the proposed text amendment? Does the board wish to receive any further information on this before you begin your deliberations or have any more questions for staff or the applicant? All right. If not, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing, and the board may begin its deliberations. I will also remind the board that in connection with a motion to approve this, if one is made, the board would also need to take action to approve the consistency statement, which is also provided with the packet.
And that can be one motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. So I ask the board, do you want to open discussion or does someone want to offer a motion for the purpose of discussion? Do it either.
I'll start off just by asking a question.
Sure.
During the agenda meeting yesterday that Commissioners, Mayor Park Tim Sears and I had with the manager, he said there was enforcement mechanisms in place that if the applicant did not uphold to the ordinance, there would be ways to enforce or possibly revoke the special use permit so he wouldn't be able to operate anymore.
Okay.
That's the question, if that's still the case, and does that address Mr. Mueller's concerns?
Okay. I'll ask the manager and perhaps Mr. Leidy to speak to that.
I was mainly responding in terms of our ability to enforce zoning ordinance provisions. And essentially, that's what this would be, and they also would receive a special use permit. And so, you know, we could pursue any violation under our normal zoning enforcement procedures or through the revocation of the special use permit, which would ultimately come back to the board. I think Mr. Mueller was speaking in terms of more specific procedures to monitor what specifically is going on. And that's something we would, that would be a new thing for us.
Yeah, I completely agree with the manager's observations and, and his take on Mr. Mueller's comment, you know. But I think for a lot of things, this would be like a lot of things where likely it would be complaint-driven, you know, and once that's done, the question would be, how would the town investigate or conduct an investigation to determine whether the applicant, or the owner was in compliance with the ordinance or not? But, you know, that's done in different ways. I think it would be difficult, but I don't think it would be impossible. But I, but anyway, I think there, and there are enforcement mechanisms, once an investigation is done to show that there is a lack of compliance that the manager has pointed out.
The ordinance itself has one main provision that basically requires an annual audit of the leases. We could always adopt internal procedures to, to review this that wouldn't be required to be placed in the ordinance. This is something that we typically do. So I think that Kelly and I could get together and think about that a little bit more, but I think that could be done outside of the ordinance.
Well, I mean, the, the annual audit is a, is a reasonable step. You know, we're going to face this problem, I think, when we get ultimately into the multifamily provisions. It's not the only difficult to enforce ordinance we have. I mean, the whole single-family related people in the rental house industry, you know, I don't believe for a minute most of those houses are occupied by the number of related people that's in the ordinance. But again, we don't go knocking on those doors either to enforce that ordinance. You know, I, I get the concern about the, you know, the, the half of the units, and you know, we're talking about workforce housing. I also understand the need for flexibility. I, you know, I'm, I'd like to see us try it. You know, I know there's some danger in trying things for, for the first time. It does some things that, that we talk about a lot. It does make a move toward some workforce housing. It does take an obsolete use, an obsolete structure, give it an alternative to being torn down and, and putting single-family rentals back there. I mean, that's the way we lost a lot of the hotels in the first place is because we didn't give them any options except to tear them down and put rental houses back in, in place. So I think where I come down is a, is a willing to try it. I think the Planning Board's done a pretty good job of, of putting a box around this along with the applicant. So that's just where I am.
I'm okay to, I agree with the, it's complaint-driven. I agree with that. And if you're going to see it in my calls for service with the police department, if they continue to go up there, they're going to know who's, who's there. And I think that would give us an inside look at it as well. So I'm okay with it to try it. Thank you.
Do we think in, I'm okay trying it, but I, I am concerned about what mechanisms we're going to use to do that. And it definitely does open a discussion to, with other things we're talking about with multifamily or even ADUs where we need to figure out a practical way we're going to do this. The other question I would have, would an annual audit, maybe semi-annual would be better just because we'd be canvassing the winter season and the summer season?
It's not bad.
Especially if we're going to try it out at first to, if the board would be amenable to that?
I don't have a problem with that.
Think it's a good idea.
I think that's probably helpful. Does the applicant have a problem with?
I mean, I think that Mr. Galasa and his track record of taking buildings and converting them and keeping them in good shape and complying with your ordinance has, has been approved after the years. Beach Bar Inc. would probably be, the ladies that work there will probably be the ones that are going to keep track of this, you know, trying to do this twice a year. The intention is to rent these on an annual basis. So when you see a lease that's for a year, you need to see it twice in the same year.
I think my concern is, I'm sure the applicant's intentions are there. It's, this doesn't just apply to your property. It applies to other properties. And I'd want to make sure that, especially when we're trying out something new, that we're making sure, just as you said, it's something new for you guys, too.
Right, it is. And, and I think the town had reached out to the other five property owners and didn't get responses from a couple. And I think Tar Hill said that they really weren't interested in trying to do that. So we're only talking about six different properties that this could happen to. And I, I don't think the first colony in is going to convert.
Kind of agree with Commissioner Lambert that, you know, it is brand-new and maybe just for the first year to have it semi-annual because it is just 90 days. It's not like, if you sign a lease, you're not signing a lease for a year, you're signing a lease for 90 days or possibly a year, but.
They prefer to do this on an annual basis because it'll be easier.
Then would it be, would it be easier for us to say that the 90 days is out, it has to be 360 days?
Except.
Well, if you're saying he's going to sign and they, they want to sign your leases, would it be easier for us just to put it in the ordinance that it has to be a year lease? You want both sides, is my point. I mean, if you're going to do 90 days, then we ought to see every, every applicant that comes in ought to get notified to the clerk.
I think that's honorous for.
I understand, but now we're, now we're both saying it's honorous.
How about a, how about a compromise, which is that the town for calls can request an audit, but not less than an annual audit? So if there's a problem there, the town can request an audit. To, can that be done, John?
Yeah, you could put that in here. If, if it's in here, then we give the town the authority to request one, and the, and the owner would have to comply.
And remember, we're going to be cutting back for special use permit.
Right.
So we'll run this through, through this board again.
Right.
And whatever special conditions you want to put on it.
Oh, that's true, too.
You know, we could also discuss that at that time. Your suggestion was, I think Lee Or would like to say so.
Hi, I'm Lee Or Galasa. I could show you guys 100% of the tenants, 100% of the leases. 100% of my current tenants are all workforce. There's more than 100 tenants of mine that are all 100% workforce. I don't have one person that is my tenant that doesn't work somewhere. I only do minimum one year, but sometimes I come across people that, if I have a place available, which is rare, over the past four or five years, I've had zero vacancies. But if something does come up and they need it only for six months, I'll, I would do them a favor if I feel like I should, but there's more than enough people that need housing for a year. And this was actually something I wanted to do when we first bought the hotel because I thought it would be very helpful. Now, we already did all this, all these changes. We, we invested in like a website and new door locks and everything. I know the hotel's going to do well, so I hope if the ordinance passes, I'm not opposed to trying this out next year, but I'm not really so sure how, like, if we're really going to do this anyway now. But I was excited about it last year, but it's good, because I know that, listen, either way, if it was going to be a year-round residential complex, we would have made 40% less income based on my numbers. So I was excited to do that because I know so many people that need homes. But because it took so long, now we're already making, making it a hotel, I'm not sure if we're ever going to make it year-round, but I'm not opposed to it, still not opposed to it. So that's all I have to say.
I think Mrs., I think Commissioner Lambert's take was, it's not just you. Your track record speaks for itself.
Right.
But let's say some new owners have the other opportunity, and they do it, they don't have your track record.
Of one of the other hotels.
So it's not just site-specific, is all we were trying to say.
The motels, other motels, you mean, have the opportunity? Yeah, that's fine. I, I don't think they will do it, but.
Do it under special use permit?
We can.
We have that opportunity to come back and do it under special use permit?
You could, you can impose that as a condition, but frankly, I think the suggestion the mayor had fits well within the ordinance because you already have a provision calling for the annual reporting. It would be easy enough to also include or when requested by, by the town. I mean, I just, I, I guess my point is, then it would be an automatic condition, if you know what I mean. It wouldn't be one that's subject to, some people get it and some people don't. I think it'd be better to have it already in the ordinance.
And I'm okay with that. I just want to give the opportunity to try it.
Okay. All right. I, I, I'm there. So someone want to try that motion? If not, I, I will. I, I will go ahead and do it. I make, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance as presented with the addition to the audit provision that audit may be, the audit will be not less than annual and can be requested by the town at any time. And audits can be requested by the town at any time for calls.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. That brings us to reports and recommendations from the Planning and Development Director, and I'll call Director Wyatt back to the podium.
Thank you. I won't go through this. I'm sure everyone's had an opportunity to read it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. As you know, from Suffolk Health Advisory Committee, that update is that we're going to be bringing back the revised ordinance for parking on Suffolk systems. We continue to work on grants for estuarium shoreline management. During your consent agenda, you authorized additional money to fund the sand relocation and new management program. So that's wonderful. We have a lot of applicants participating this year. And yeah, that's about it. We just wrapped up accepting some vendor applications for our upcoming farmers market. The Art and Fletcher Committee will select those vendors at their next meeting, and April 13th is our last winter market. But I'll have, unless there's specific questions.
Quick question.
Commissioner Brinkley.
The EV action plan.
Yes.
You run into trouble installing, I see, because of the geothermal thermal system. So you're examining plans, and we'll provide an update. Do those plans possibly include the spending of money?
No. I think we're just looking at finding two more parking spaces that won't impact the geothermal. So we're, we're still proceeding, it's just locating two different parking spaces here at Town Hall. So I think a portion of the money allocated was the cost to run the electric to bore under the parking lot. That's already, we've already discussed that, so it shouldn't be any different.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Well, we'll proceed to the next item then, which is the discussion of the potential accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
That's me again.
That's you, still. And you again after that.
I put a brief presentation together, if I can find it, for this item. Okay. So as we had stated in the summary sheet. So, as we had stated in the summary sheet, at your fall retreat, when we were discussing strategic plan for 2024, it did come up that there was a desire to regroup for the discussion of accessory dwelling units. And specifically, we have an action item that says, develop and present accessory dwelling unit ordinance with a menu of optional provisions, regulatory standards that may improve community acceptance. And then I've listed, we listed some potential options there. So this was part of our strategic plan, so we wanted to go ahead and get started on it if this was something that there was interest in moving forward with. Just a list of potential regulatory options that we can look at. I think a big part of the conversation is going to be, where would we want accessory dwelling units to even be located? Is it zoning district-specific? Is there a geographic area that we're more interested in? We can apply minimum lot sizes, we can apply size limitations to the ADU itself, such as based upon a percentage of the principal dwelling unit. We can allow attached or detached, both or neither. I've seen some locations that have an owner occupancy requirement that states that the property owner of the principal dwelling should be, or the property owner should either reside in the principal dwelling or the ADU. We'll have to establish parking requirements, we'll have to discuss architectural design, height restrictions. I have setbacks in here because accessory dwelling unit might imply accessory structure setbacks. Most people apply principal structure setbacks to an ADU, so one need to talk about that. The rental duration, restrictions on rental periods so that we can hopefully discourage or prevent short-term rentals and maintain the availability of these ADUs for long-term residents. We would need to look at some type of deed restriction to do that. Utilities and services, same as we've said before, to require either shared or separate utility connections, such as septic water and electrical. Most places do shared. Obviously, you want to make sure that your septic capacity is adequate for any additional bedrooms. And permitting process, if we were to explore accessory dwelling units, would we process these administratively, or would we want to consider them via a special use permit process? A lot to think about there. I did put a little chart together of what other locations are doing. I looked at Dare County, Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, Duck, and Manio. All of these locations allow just one ADU on the property, that's it. They all allow both attached and detached ADUs. Most places say that if it's going to be attached, it can, or actually either attached or detached, it can't be any greater than fifty percent of the area of the principal structure. Some go on to have another requirement to put a cap on it, so either fifty percent or twelve hundred square feet. As in Dare County, fifty percent or six hundred square feet in Kill Devil Hills, or eight hundred, rather. Same for Kitty Hawk, Duck, and then Manio has the six hundred square feet. Moving down, height is predominantly regulated by whatever the district, the standard within that district is. Kitty Hawk has some language, twenty-eight feet from finished grade, or the height of the principal dwelling, whichever is lower. Duck uses twenty-seven feet. Town of Manio actually states that an, any accessory dwelling unit shall be, it has to be one or one-and-a-half story. Oops, went too far. As far as setbacks, again, you can see there, most everyone applies the principal structure setback. Kill Devil Hills goes on to say principal structure and it can't be forward of your primary home. Most locations use their district standard for lot coverage. Dare County has thirty-eight percent. Parking, everybody's pretty much aligned with one to two additional parking spaces for the ADU. Dare County has a restriction on the occupancy, it has to be long-term only, and they define long-term as thirty-one days. Kill Devil Hills does the same, but not in every district. Say they allow ADUs in five districts, in three of them, they have to be long-term only, and the others, they do not. They have to execute an agreement in perpetuity prior to the issuance of the building permit, and they rely on thirty-one days as well. And I was unable to find any language related to long-term requirements for Kitty Hawk, Duck, and Manio. Then there were just some other restrictions that they applied. Dare County and Kill Devil Hills had some restrictions, they stated RVs, travel trailers, manufactured homes can't be used as an ADU. Most everyone has language that says it cannot be subdivided or segregated in ownership from the principal dwelling. Kitty Hawk, Duck, and Manio had language in there that stated that the ADU must be serviced by the same driveway as the principal structure. I thought that was, I thought that was a good provision as well. So that's just an idea of what other locations are doing. Here's a draft menu of options we can consider. I think at this point, I was just hoping that we could have some discussion about where the board is at with this. Is there a desire for staff to dive into this and bring this back with a lengthy list of options and what, what the expectation is?
Before we start, I want to ask a couple of questions. Those municipalities that had occupants, Dare County and Manio, that had occupancy restrictions, could we poll them and find out how long they've had that restriction in place and what their history is? If they've had to undertake any kind of enforcement action on any of their units and sort of what the history of complaint might have been?
Absolutely.
The other question, Mr. Leidy asked you yesterday, Greensboro had put in place a short-term rental restriction, and I wondered if you'd had a chance to look at that yet.
I have not had a chance to review that yet.
Okay.
To retrieve or review.
Because that, that will be a question, how we are able to restrict occupancy.
Yes.
I'm sure. Okay, all right, thank you. Well, board, what is your, what is your thinking on this? I'll, I'll actually poll the board. I'll start with Commissioner Lambert.
I think there's a lot to talk about with it. My biggest concern is the restrictions on it. I don't have an interest in doing vacation ADUs. So that's really what everything would revolve around for me, is making sure that we can restrict them and how that would work. And again, we just talked about it with the hotels, and we're talking about it with multifamily, so I think that's a bigger thing that we need to solve before we go further.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
I'm interested in the discussion. I think in Nag's head, unlike Manio and Kill Devil Hills, we don't have a sewer system that we can tie into except for the village, and the village exploited their lot coverage, so there's no room there. And we don't have the size of the properties with a septic system to increase septics, especially under the new septic rules.
Right.
So, I mean, this isn't a mess. It's not going to fill everybody's box, is my point, so...
Right.
I mean, I'm interested in talking about it, but I would also be interested in talking about all the non-conforming illegal ADUs that we have and how we can make those conforming or at least bring those to a situation that they are safe for those currently renting on either the upstairs or the downstairs of those over-under, non-connected properties.
Right. While you're there, have, has the Housing Group had any discussion about how to incentivize owners to move units from short-term to long-term?
You're talking about the County's Housing Group? The County's Housing Group is having not much more discussion than what we're going to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
There's a lot of people involved in a lot of opinions, so...
Right. Okay, all right, thank you. I, you know, one of the things I would like to see us do as we move along is poll some of those owners, you know, and say, you know, where, where are you right now? I mean, how much frustration do you have with your short-term rentals? You know, are you at a point? And what would be involved? And is there anything the town can do about that that would incentivize you? But I, as I often say, I think you have to ask those owners where they are. We can't sort of speculate on what that would be. I think we need to hear from them.
You will see some change. I mean, short-term Westside rentals are not what short-term Westside Cobra rentals were. You will see some change over.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Commissioner Brinkley.
I think you all bring up some good points, and I'm interested in the, in the discussion, especially incentivizing. And I've asked that before, how do you incentivize somebody to possibly switch over to a long-term rental? And then the other one, Mayor Pertham said about the illegal duplexes. We've got some neighborhoods that have a lot of those, so how can we bring them into compliance?
Right.
But yes, I certainly agree with, discussed it, looking at it further.
Thank you.
I think you guys have brought up some really good points, and I think Commissioner Sears brought up a good point, is a lot of these places aren't going to check the box as far as septic and as far as lot coverage, too, correct? So, I mean, I don't even know, as far as lots, in Nag's head, how many would we be talking about? I know that's a very general question, but, I mean, it's probably not a ton.
South, South Ridge in the new section is twenty thousand square foot lots, and they would possibly have the property to do it.
Yeah, I was, I did have an inquiry recently from someone who built a house many, many years ago on two lots and is now living alone and would like to build an accessory dwelling unit, stay on the property, essentially. So that, that's a possibility. So I'm hearing some need for information. One is, is sort of a survey of what's out there in terms of existing non-conforming accessory dwelling units, what we can, what we can document. Something about, about lots in terms of, you know, where they are and what size of lot, maybe kind of generally, maybe a little bit of thought about what kind of lot, and then how many of those are and where are they? A question about potentially incentivizing property owners to move, who have short-term rentals, to move those over to long-term rentals. And then some enforcement history from towns that have occupancy restrictions in them. I think all of those questions have already come up, so we're going to need that kind of information, really, to launch the discussion, it sounds like.
Perfect. Thank you.
So is that something that you want brought back to the board here for discussion?
I would say yes. Yes. Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
And the next item is consideration of appointment to the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Committee.
So in 2019, Dare County, Corinta County, and the local towns all got together, and we updated the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's now called the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This, the first time we did this was 2019. This board adopted that regional hazard mitigation plan in 2020. Essentially, they are, Dare County is initiating the process of updating that 2019 regional hazard mitigation plan. And as part of that, they're requesting each town and county provide staff members and citizen, up to two citizens to participate in that conversation. In 2019, we had Megan Lambert and Mead Gwyn participate as the, the citizens to participate in the HMP. We've spoken with Commissioner Lambert, she has interest in continuing again with the update. Mead Gwyn on the planning board is unable to, but David Thompson has expressed an interest in participating as well. So today, I'm hoping to get some guidance or some consensus to move forward with placing those two citizens, Megan Lambert and David Thompson, as the citizen representatives for the update of the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'm happy to take that in the form of a motion, and we can do it.
Motion to appoint Commissioner Lambert and Planning Board Member David Thompson to the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? With thanks to Commissioner Lambert and to Mr. Thompson. Thank you. That brings us to new business, and that would be committee reports from our commissioners. So I'll start.
Nothing going on this month, thank you.
We have a septic committee meeting coming up. They sent out a poll to see what you day, so that'll be the target report next time. You did give a janet's peer update, and then there was a question about the wind turbines. I emailed that to everybody. Doesn't sound like they'll be coming online anytime soon. And then we had our first meeting of the, the, our Housing Committee for the town. Commissioner Lambert and I attended, along with the citizens that reappointed, Ms. Creef, Duke, and some other members. We have our next meeting scheduled for the fifteenth of this month.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Sears?
Nothing from tourism, and Town Manager has her report for the Housing Task Force.
And we already heard her report from the Housing Task Force. Appreciate that. Commissioner Lambert?
We have not had a government education access channel meeting this past month, but we will be having one at the end of this month.
Okay, all right, thank you. And from me, I will say, we don't respond to public comment. I do have two items, though. We don't have a resolution in front of us for this meeting on the Jockeys Ridge topic and of AECs. I would ask if the board is okay with me sending a letter on behalf of the board of comment, and I see heads nodding, so we will do that. I will tell you, when I became aware of this, I reached out to all of the folks that I had asked to comment the first time around when it was in front of the CRC. So I've already emailed, I had emailed before I contacted the town about any posting, all of the local mayors, the folks at Jockeys Ridge, to ask them to all submit comments. I will say, for our citizens, if anybody is watching or watches before the deadline at the end of the week, please do submit your comments to the North Carolina Rules Commission. You can find that information on the town's Facebook posting and probably our other social media, or contact the town if you're interested in doing that. I'll also note that the CRC will meet here in Dare County on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of April. If you're interested in following their work or in supporting their activities, be aware that they rotate, and so they will be here later this month. That brings us to consideration of an amendment to the traffic control map, and I'll call Manager Garman and Chief Hale.
Chief Hale can go ahead and handle this, thank you.
Good morning again. With Anita Lane, over the past few years, the town has had some issues collecting trash from the properties, both north and south of Anita, from East Gallery Road, due to the number of vehicles that arrive at each property and overflowing onto the right-of-way and parking on the streets right there. With that, that has prevented the trash trucks being able to get into empty trash on collection days with the cans being blocked and even access with the width of the street and trucks itself. A centralized dumpster was tried earlier this year, but turned out not to be popular with the owners. So when it was recommended to deem the street no parking tollway zones, they were all in favor of it. I met with the sanitation superintendent to see how much room would be needed based on the length of the trash trucks and the turn-in radius, and it was deemed not only to make Anita Lane no parking, but also East Gallery Road from NC-12 to Anita Lane. That would allow trucks to be able to turn onto Anita Lane and, due to the narrow width of both streets, allow drivers to enter without having to worry about striking a vehicle. These streets are only about twenty-five to thirty-five, twenty-five to thirty-foot in width throughout, and a parked vehicle on either side would create a high chance... on either side would create a high chance of a vehicle crash through someone parking in this location. It's being recommended to make no parking between signs, so we can try to limit the number of posts that will be out there, so it would be no parking between signs, and also a towaway zone recommendation. And that needs to be understood that that's just not going to be for trash days. So it's going to be imperative for the property owners to communicate to their rental companies that vehicles parked out there. Will be towed so the trash trucks can get access to the carts on trash days. Any questions? Or, I think we got a map.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
And it's my understanding that issues experienced by the sanitation department, but the owners of these homes have requested this be done this way in lieu of a dumpster.
Yes, the centralized dumpster was placed, I met with the superintendent last year to try to see an area, and he explained to me what happened. I believe he came up with the idea of the centralized can. I don't know if it was going to be a dumpster or those new big three or four hundred gallon cans that they have. So they tried this, and then I guess in my position from the property owners, didn't want to walk or carry their trash to the can.
Just wanted to point out that they...
Yep, that it works for the owners.
What they're getting.
What they're getting. Yeah.
Chief, would you still be able to park? Because I know, like, surfers sometimes park just past that intersection right there. Would people still be able to park there?
Yes, I left that open, just due to some vehicles that do park up there. Obviously, car vehicles or two-wheel-drive vehicles probably wouldn't be in a park due to the amount of sand up there. But from speaking with the superintendent of sanitation, they have no reason to get up there with the trash truck. There are no cans, there are no dumpsters up that way. So that area right there was left as is, and then it would just be Anita, and then west back to NC-12.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion that we approve is presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney. I don't know if you're planning to speak to this. Can you tell us the status of the lawsuit?
I was going to ask for a closed session in order to consult with you all about that.
Okay. Good. Good enough. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Items from the town manager, an update on the public services facility, and is David going to do this? Yep.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So I've brought up on the screen the overall site plan that we have for the public services development. Just to review, on the right-hand side of the screen, that's our new administration building, which was formerly the brushyard. And then that is bisected by Lark Avenue. And then on the left-hand side of the screen, we've got four new buildings that are currently under construction. So we'll start off with the right-hand side of the screen. You can see we've got a lot more color added this month than what we had previous months, and that's because a lot of the final site work is currently in progress. To go ahead and show some of the progress that we've made over the past month, this is where we were last month with the building construction, where we had about two-thirds of the siding in place, the canopy in place for the building, and this is where we are today. So that siding has been finished off there along the front side of the building. The vertical siding is currently being painted. We've got some sidewalk work in front that has recently been completed as well. This is a view from the southwest corner of the building. You can see we've got some HVAC units that are in the process of getting ready to be installed. The roof and the soffit work has been completed. Moving inside to the building, where they've made some real progress over the past month. You can see they've started some of the ceiling tile work. They're doing their overhead trim out right now, and then they will be proceeding with installing flooring as well as the base work here, and then finishing off the ceiling tile work. That is expected to take place this week. We've got some cabinetry that's been installed. This is a view from, once you walk into the building, where the, this is the reception area, and this is going to be a built-in desk for staff to be able to meet and greet the public. And as you can see, the restrooms, they are nearly complete with all the tile work and accessories installed. We had a big milestone that we achieved here within the past couple of weeks. The administration building was energized, along with the water distribution building, and so having these buildings electrified really helps with going ahead and completing some of the finishing work. So moving over to the west-hand side of the site, this is the combined fleet facilities and sanitation building. This was a photo that was taken last month as workers were installing the brick facade. And on the interior, the framework was being complete where we stand today. That brick facade and canopy has been completed here on the front of that combined space. Looking on the interior, the sheet rock has been installed, as well as some of the primer there for the walls, and the overhead utility work taking place. Here's another angle looking down the hallway, and then out into the garage space. This is a viewpoint taken from the office space, looking to the west into the facilities maintenance bay. And as you can see, they are working on painting and finishing out the overhead utility installs as well as the garage doors. Moving on to the vehicle storage building, last month, they had just started with the foundation work, and where we stand today, they've got the framing up for the structure and have just recently started with the blockwork. So making some really strong progress there. Moving over to the west, this is where we were last month with the equipment storage building. They were doing some prep work for the exterior siding, and this month, you can see that the siding is completed, and they are in the process of painting that. And then on the interior, they've been working on going ahead and finishing off the painting as well as some of the other finish work. And then lastly, for the water distribution building, which is sited over near the water plant, last month, they were in the process of going ahead and completing the exterior siding, and this is where we stand today. We're really getting close to having a finished product. You can see the garage doors are on, windows, exterior doors. And then from, I just wanted to also make note that the water distribution building was energized as well, and with that came a new transformer. And so this is a picture of that new transformer for that primary electrical line, which was installed as part of the project, and that spans all the way from Lark Avenue internal to the site, and then looping around and tying back into Pond Avenue. And then lastly, this is a picture of the break room. You can see that the cabinetry has recently been installed. Again, they've got another coat or two of paint to go up, and they're getting really close to going ahead and finishing this. So with that, just want to give you a brief overview of the overall schedule. Right now, for the administration building, we are targeting the last week of April to try and occupy. There's still a lot of work that's left to be done, not only internal to the building, but external to the building. I just wanted to show you a couple pictures. External to the building, they've recently installed some pavers, and then out in front, they've got the concrete curbing and ready to move forward with the pavers. This work has been ongoing, and so they've been pressing really hard to go ahead and get this completed. But we're still making utility connections at this time. We've got exterior lighting to be installed, as well as landscaping, and then delivery of furniture. But we're all targeting that last week in April for potential occupancy for the administration building. And then shortly thereafter, we're getting close with the water distribution building, and we're looking at the first week or two in May to go ahead and complete that building and potentially be able to occupy within that timeframe. From there, we've got the combined fleet facilities and sanitation building. On the east side of the building where we have our fleet maintenance base, there's still some ongoing work. We're putting in a lift there, and that lift is actually recessed in the ground, and so that's going to take a little bit longer. But a majority of the west side of the building and then the common area should be done in the June timeframe. So we're trying to work out the logistics of maybe a partial occupancy sooner rather than later. And the reason for that is that we could demo the existing building at that time, and that would give us enough time to stay on track with our overall schedule and the other site improvements that go along with that. And then lastly, the equipment building, we're looking at a June timeframe when that will be finished off. And then lastly, the vehicle storage building, which is now tracking for, I think, a November completion time. So with that, that is just a summary of the recent progress and the overall schedule. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
When we take occupancy of the administration building, and that's where the bulk and brush drop-off is also located, so on that side, will we open that entire site? I mean, would we be able to recommence drop-off?
There might be a little bit of a lag time before we can open up that brushyard, just because of the remaining site work. We're probably looking at possibly a couple-week lag time between the two.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for David?
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Thank you. You might want to wait there. I'm going to take the liberty of shuffling the agenda and bringing up Item J3, the modifications to the bulkyard operations at this point, since we're talking about the facilities there and, you know, the related access to that site. So you or David?
Well, I had an update that Nancy had given me. We just wanted to provide a real, simple update on what we plan to do, and he's still got the drawing on the screen there. So you saw on the south side of that bulk brushyard property, there's a new ramp that's been installed, and on the building itself, there's a bump out on the south side, and you've all been in the building and seen that. That is the office space for the attendant. Previously, they were in a shed, and now they're in this space. And on the east side of that is a door, and so when someone pulls up to the ramp, they will walk out of that space and be able to scan their sticker and direct them where to unload their material. Just further east from that, you have a ramp that goes up to a pad, and you'll back into that pad, and then there'll be several containers situated there. And instead of having to lift things up, the idea is now you'll be able to drop them into the container, which would be much easier for the public to utilize. And so we think that although we'll need to monitor the site and change out containers when necessary, move some of the material around in the containers to make space for people dropping off, it won't be as labor-intensive throughout the day. Previously, sometimes the operator or the attendant had to ask someone to place material inside a bucket, and then they would lift the material into the container. So with that said, we are proposing to open the site five days a week instead of three days a week. And for years, it's been only open three days a week on, I believe, Tuesday, or Monday, Thursday, and Saturday. And now we'll be open five days, so we will close on Wednesday and still keep it open on Saturday. We think Saturday's an important day for the public to be able to access the site. And so the attendant is still a part-time employee. They would work three days a week, and then you would have some of our administrative staff rotate over to that space the two other days, and they can go out and scan the sticker and then let the other sanitation folks know when something needs attention. But we should be able to do that with our existing staff, and we're going to try that and be able to offer more service to the public with this new facility than we have in the past. And so that's a good thing. Previously, we had a recycling container on the public works site that was really accessible 24 hours a day. Our preference would be to move that container into the brushyard site behind the gate, and so then it would only be accessible during the times when it's open. And this is really going to help us with the contamination. When we're not there and no one's watching, a lot of things get dropped off there that shouldn't be, and a lot of things that we have to deal with disposing of, like TVs and mattresses and things that shouldn't be brought there. So it's really becoming a dumping grounds, and we really think it needs to be controlled. With the new fencing and gate system here, it will really allow us to control that better. We'll still have the recycling center here at Town Hall, and we do have cameras out here, but this would be open still outside of those hours. So really, that's the update for you. We just wanted to let you and the public know that this is our plan. As David mentioned, you know, there may be a slight lag time between when this is available and when. I think the thing is that's key is that our brush bulkyard collection, curbside collection, is suspended at the end of April, and so there could be a lag time between when you can place material at the curb and when you can use the site. So we really need to figure out exactly when this is going to open up and limit that lag time to the extent we can, and I'll be talking to Nancy about that, and we'll certainly notify the public of anything that's going to happen.
Sounds like it's only going to be about a month, and I know our citizens and visitors are going to be really excited about the higher level of service and the additional access to that facility. It's going to be a really good thing. I think it's going to be welcome. Appreciate the way y'all have worked that out.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Then that will take us back to the update on the Dare County Housing Task Force. Thank you, David.
So I just wanted to give a brief update. Mayor Pertim, Mike Sears couldn't attend the meeting this month, so I attended and just had some notes on this. They started off the meeting by adopting the mission statement, and I think it's something we showed the board last month. I won't go ahead and read that. It's on their website. They do have a dedicated page to this effort now, and they've posted the mission statement. They didn't make any changes to the statement that you were presented, so that's what was adopted. They had discussions about a lot of different things. They talked about the target markets again and what we're really trying to accomplish. It really spans the gamut of everything that we need here in the county, you know, anywhere from low and middle-income housing to seasonal workers, J1s, and so forth. And it's really to address workers, workforce for local businesses, for government, education, and healthcare sectors, and also seasonal workers. And one comment was provided that we should focus not just on providing housing, but pathways to homeownership as well. So with that said, that's a pretty broad scope and a large and complex problem to try to address all those needs. So the county also talked about, the group talked about the towns, and the county need to look at the regulations that might be barriers to providing housing. They also talked about... They also talked about potentially pursuing legislative efforts that would allow the county and the towns to do more with tax dollars than can be done now. And they talked a little bit about what you can spend tax dollars on in terms of housing. And really, it's limited to this 80% AMI or less segment of the workforce. They've talked about some examples from Colorado, which I know Mayor Protim has brought up to everyone as well as that committee. And a lot of those things would not be allowed by state law because of the restrictions on how you can spend money. And so, I think the legislative efforts would be focused on being able to do some of those things. And that's really getting back to how you incentivize people to convert these short-term rentals to long-term units. And so, that is gaining traction, not sure yet how that's going to move forward. They are sharing information. They set up a Google Drive, which we have access to where we can go and look at studies that have been done. And they've shared the Colorado information, for instance, with everyone. This will continue to evolve. I would say that this is still sort of a preliminary meeting discussion at this point. I did meet with the county manager outside of the meeting a couple of weeks ago to talk about a few things and this came up and I think that he's working on trying to provide a little bit more structure to this. And there may be, in an effort to hire a consultant to help with this, I sort of asked about what we think the end product of this is going to be. Is it going to be a report? You know, it's obviously a very complex problem and a lot of things are being discussed. There needs to be a way to synthesize this and create an action plan. And right now, I, you know, I think that he's going to need to bring in some additional resources to help with that. Certainly, the county manager's busy enough where he can't do all this by himself. So, with that said, you know, we meet every third Tuesday of the month and we'll have another meeting in April and that's what I have for you today.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Sears, anything to add?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That then brings us to consideration of the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board of Directors Voting Delegate. They asked that we delegate someone as a voting member for their upcoming annual meeting. We are slightly beyond the deadline for naming that person, but we are not beyond the time when the materials will be sent out. So, I would ask if the board is willing to nominate me as the voting delegate for NAGS Head and if so, make a motion to that effect.
Make a motion that we appoint you?
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Give it to me.
Yes. I'm sorry, I am jumping right ahead. Excuse me. So, Board of Commissioners Agenda, and I will start with you, Commissioner Brinkley.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I wanted to bring it up. I think you all have read online and other media sources about the Buxton Beach issue that they're having down there with the abandonment of the military site and the petroleum and stuff. Is it appropriate or would it be appropriate for the town to write a letter? They've got a letter campaign started down there, just calling. I think online I saw where there was like 27 different recipients of those letters calling on the government, Army Corps of Engineers, the militarizations to take action to remedy the issue. If that is appropriate, I would ask if we could do that?
I think that is appropriate. I will tell you that several weeks ago, I took it upon myself to send an email to our representatives in DC after reading a report of that. And apparently, it kicked a little bit of a hornet's nest and Park Superintendent Hallock has thanked me since for doing that because apparently it did get a little bit of attention. I think to do something officially on behalf of the town would be entirely appropriate. You know, we sort of have this one war concept and pollution anywhere is not good for air environment. It affects the image of NAGS Head as well. People conflate NAGS Head with everything else. So, I think that that would be appropriate and if, I see the board members nodding, so I think that we will do so.
And one other thing, I appreciate former Mayor Muller talking about the red light enforcement. I would encourage, and this is coming from me as just an individual, the strict and aggressive enforcement of red light violations continued by the police department. I had an opportunity to see their admin assistant yesterday that does their social media and told her how much I appreciated the effort that she's made as their social media coordinator to post stuff on Facebook and I do think that helps. I talked to one of the officers and he said he even saw, after being stopped for a violation, that he even saw online that we were doing it. And the other thing is, I know you talked about the DA. Just from my past experience, I think it's going to be difficult to ask the DA not to drop something just for NAGS Head. I'll, you know, I'll let the chief handle that, but I hear what you're saying, I just, to not reduce it. I think they have an administrative court session for traffic violations and you just go in there and ask the DA for a reduction. I don't know if that's still the case, if they do reductions like that, but you had asked the board to, and I just wanted to say, but I do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll continue with Commissioners' Agendas. Thank you for that. Thank you for reminding me and bringing me back to this. Thank you for those items as well. Commissioner Sanders, anything?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sears. Commissioner Lambert, all right, great, thank you very much. That brings us to a request for nominations for the Lightkeeper and NAGS Header awards. And you have before you a list of past recipients of both of those after, you know, losing a little bit of traction. I think we've gotten traction back and we've been able to make some awards here over the last few years. And it is certainly a very gratifying process, you know, to learn about the people who've had that kind of impact on our town and then to recognize them and then to see the surprise and the joy that is often expressed by those folks when they find out that they've been, that they've been elected to one of those recognitions. And so, I would ask, now is the time, I will ask our citizens to please consider nominations for the Lightkeeper or NAGS Header. The Lightkeeper is for a living person. The NAGS Header is for someone who is deceased, but both, in both cases, someone who has had a significant impact on the life of our community. And the nomination forms are available from the administrative offices. So, please bring those to us. That brings us to, and before we go to closed session, we will be, we will be recessing to the budget workshop. We do not anticipate at this point a need for a mid-month meeting, assuming that our workshop goes well and we're able to cover what we're needing to cover. So, when we return from our closed session, we will be recessing to the workshop immediately following. I'll ask, is there any other business to come before the board before we get to closed session? Seeing none, then a motion and I will, John, if you will give us all the terms and I would like to discuss a potential nominee for one of those awards.
All right.
If you will include that in your references.
All right, yes, sir. So, the board needs a motion to go into closed session as allowed by General Statute 143-318.11A1 to prevent the premature disclosure of an honor, award or honorary degree as well as under General Statute 143-318.11A3 in order to consult with the town attorney regarding the pending Dare County Local Act litigation and to preserve that privilege and under 143-318.11A5 in order to discuss the possible acquisition of the real property located. What's the address for that property or the description of it?
Forty-two, twenty-two South Crow 10.
Forty-two, twenty-two South Crow 10 Highway.
All right, thank you. You've heard the terms, if someone will move that.
They moved.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session. Board has returned to open session. Mr. Leidy, will you please report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the board did discuss the items that they wanted to close session to discuss, but no actions were taken.
All right, thank you very much. Then a, is it a motion to adjourn to the workshop or recess to the workshop? Well, it's adjourned, I guess adjourned to the workshop. So, a motion would be in order?
I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. All right, the board is adjourned.